Online, so the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's Wednesday morning, April 26, 10:00 a.m. This is a special meeting. Again, we have public comment cards up at the, or at the back on the door. If anyone would like to make a comment, please grab a card, fill it out, and get it up to the front. To my left is County Council, Huddle, Commissioner Gold, myself, Commissioner Huxley, to my right, Commissioner Boyce. And again, it's Wednesday, April 26, 10:00 a.m. This is a special meeting. Do we have any agenda amendments, Commissioners?
I have none.
None, thank you.
We'll approve the agenda as published. There were a couple of, I want to say comments, but didn't add any, well, one was added. I shouldn't say that. There was on the item, Agenda Item 9, this morning, in our Commissioners' mailboxes, if you will, there were two pages of supplemental material from the Assessor's Office, which replaced Pages 7 and 9 of the original packet that was posted online. And in the Executive Session, Agenda Item 14, there was an additional item added to the Executive Session, and that was in regards to negotiations, ongoing negotiations with the Service Employees International Union. And that will come up again as, at Item 14, but no substantive changes. So we'll approve the agenda as published with those two comments, please.
Do you need a motion?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Okay. Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Call for the question?
Aye.
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 No, I said as written.
Well, but those two, I didn't, I said they weren't, in my opinion, substantive, but we can...
So there actually wasn't any amendments?
No.
No.
We're adding one item to the Executive Session.
Correct.
Correct. And on the other one, on the topic of Executive Sessions, and this was, I thought, better written to where it, while it is Executive Session, at least it lets the public and the Commissioners know what the general item of discussion will be, although it will be an Executive Session. Don't see any announcements here. Did we get any public comment cards?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to announce it, but I think this Friday, the Board is also having a meeting to discuss economic development. Is that correct? At 10:00 a.m.?
That's correct. It wasn't, uh...
Oh, me. Sorry.
Oh, you can't take it, tear it off if you don't.
Put it on. That's my motto.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Oh, you're welcome. Yes, there is a meeting at 10:00 a.m. Friday, the 28th. It was scheduled there because apparently when the Community Development Director contacted various Commissioners, that was the only day that, or this week, that the Commissioners were all able to attend. So that was basically the history behind that. And there are, I believe, two or three line items on that agenda. Again, that's this Friday, 10:00 a.m., in this meeting room with the Community Development Director. There were no public comment cards?
No.
Okay. Agenda Item 6, nothing on the consent calendar. Agenda Item 7, no administrative actions. Agenda Item 8, public hearings. There are no public hearings within this meeting scheduled. On proclamations, resolutions, legislative actions, Agenda Item 9 was the County Assessment Function Funding Assistance, which is basically abbreviated by CAFSA, C-A-F-F-A, for the annual grant. And it's the county assessor. I had sent yesterday, early morning, the county assessor an email with one, two, three, four, five, six questions. And I'd like to, if we're all right with that, to start with those questions. Are you okay with that, Assessor?
Sure.
Let's, John, let's put these on, just so the public can see the questions as the assessor goes through. And what we can do also, if, when we get to Pages 7 and 9, we can also, you know, if he would like to put those revised on there also. Turn it, there you go. Turn it a little bit more. You can pull it down, just so we have the questions, basically. Straighten out a little, well, no, down. Pull it down a little bit. A little bit. That's good. A little bit more. A little bit more. Yeah. And just straighten a little bit more. Little more, little more. And, and, there you go.
I should have you hang my pictures.
Okay.
Good line.
There's a charge for that.
They're always...
That's great.
So the, and this starts, again, you know, Assessor Cullen, you have the floor.
Okay, Jim Cullen, Curry County Assessor. Thank you for meeting today. We're here to discuss the CAFSA grant. The CAFSA grant, Chair Huxley asked for a little bit of a background. What the CAFSA grant did, it was, I believe, probably passed in 1989 legislature and began in 1990. And what it did was provide assistance to assessors' offices, helped offset the cost for counties, for the cost of assessment taxation. What it did was, it added a fee to the recording of documents. I think that fee is $10, currently $10 per recording. Back when it first started, I think that fee was $20 per recording, but it was on a more limited number of recordings. So, I mean, it's changed a little bit over the years, but that's where we're at now, $10 per recording. Also included money from interest on unpaid property taxes going to the pot to help fund So over the last 15 years, Curry County has probably averaged, in 15 years, probably $200,000 per year that's come in to help offset the cost of assessment taxation. These last three years has been less because our budget has been reduced for assessment taxation. Essentially, what it does, the CAFSA grant does, is it collects a pot of money, and then what the Department of Revenue does is it gets these grant certifications from all the counties, and they total up what the total for the state would be for the cost of assessment taxation, and then they use this money as an offset towards all of that. In the early years, I think it offset as much as 30 to 35% of the cost of assessment taxation, but that, that amount has dwindled down over the years till, to where we're now probably closer to 18%, because around the state, the cost of assessment taxation has gone up. But the pot of money that was available for it has dwindled as well.
May we interrupt you?
Sure.
If we have a question? Okay, now, when you mentioned about 35%, and these are just approximate, that's of your budget at that time? Is that what you...
Yes.
Okay, down to about 18%?
Correct.
Now, you mentioned over the last several years, when I looked and I went to the Commissioners' journals to find some of these older documents, I was unable to find, and yet I know it occurred, I was unable to find the 2015 document in there. I did touch base with the Assistant to County Council yesterday to ask them to take their eyes and see if they could find it. They were unable to find the document to, the resolution, and I was unable to find anything on 2013 and 2014 also, at least on the Commissioners' journal. But, again, I know 2015 happened because I was here. Did that also occur in 2012 or '13 and '14?
Every year, actually.
Okay, okay.
Since 1990.
So that's, you know, even approximation, that's a hefty sum, that's a great sum of money. About three, about...
So that's a great segue into my next comment.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Since 1990, Curry County has gotten almost $6.2 million from the CAFSA grant.
Was that $6.9 million?
$6.2 million.
Two, okay.
And that was since 1990, did you say?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't have expenditure levels for all those years, but I can give you the last three years. And here are no objections. I'll go ahead and do that.
Please.
In 2014-15, the county certified an expenditure level of $852,000. And in that year, the forecast amount to come in from CAFSA was about $149,500. In 1516, the certified expenditure level was $82,000, or excuse me, I'm sorry, $872,107. And the certified CAFSA share was $149,163. Last year, the certified expenditure level was $929,687, and the CAFSA share was about Now, what they, what the state will do is they will certify an approximate amount that will come back, because the amount that actually comes back to various counties depends on whatever they collect. So, that's my brief history.
Thank you.
Commissioner Huxley, you asked about typical work plan requirements, and really, most of that is contained in the CAFSA grant. And so, I don't know if you have that right there in front of you, but Page 1, it's indicated, Form 1 at the top, essentially, we are trying to give the Department of Revenue an idea where we expend our resource, as in personnel, for assessment and taxation purposes. And so, basically, what you're seeing there is what was approved last year in the budget process, and what's tentatively budgeted for this year.
So we're looking at FTEs, et cetera?
FTEs, yes.
Okay.
Form 2 and Form 3, the next two pages, are just essentially some narrative on any changes that may have, they may see between this year and last year. And then Form 4, um, is that, that's not me, is it? Form 4...
Ah, there's the...
Form 4 talks about, in evaluation, the appraisal area of assessment taxation. Really, it talks about the types of accounts that we're working throughout the year, and the number of FTEs that we employ at doing that. Essentially, in the top line on the two left-hand columns, you see 1343, new construction accounts. This year, we're estimating 1,250. Those are the accounts when we get a building permit, we go out and pick up the exception values for all the new construction. And then there's other things down there for subdivisions, own changes, limited properties and whatnot. Down below, in Section 3, well, you might be interested, Commissioner Huxley, in the second category, appeals and assessor review, because you're Chair of the Board of Property Tax Appeals. And essentially, there we're outlining how many appeals that we get. We're saying that we get approximately 200 to 250 people really coming in to talk about appealing their value, but by the time...
You take care of almost all of them?
Almost all of them. Last year, it was seven. It got down to seven. We keep estimating that we'll have a few more, because we see values going up for next year, and you would think that we're going to get more appeals. We thought we were going to this year. We didn't.
By the way, one of the fellows that's on the Board has been doing it voluntarily for years.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
And he said, just if it wasn't that many years ago, they had like 100, 200.
We were in...
It was a big, big number, as I recall.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, but yes, we were kind of in a different property tax system at that time. I think that was probably back before Measure 50. Mr. Griffith was on the Board earlier, and then got off for a while, and then came back. So he was seen at a different time.
Yeah, it was a huge, you know, time consumer for everybody, and certainly ones, you know...
And that's really the level of property tax appeals that we would see in a year back before Measure 50.
Mr. Chair.
So that was fairly typical for those days.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just curious, how many of your staff are able to deal with those people when they come in and just spend time with them, and it sounds like you have pretty good success?
Most everybody in the staff.
I thought so. Thank you.
There's really relatively few people that, I mean, my staff takes care of most of them. Occasionally, there's people that just want to hear it from the assessor, and so, really, it's very few people that really need to come through to me for that sort of thing, but...
Good. One additional question on those, new construction, that's from, then there's some procedure set up from all the different municipalities, like if it's Brookings Building, they then interface or feed your office the information also?
That's correct. We get copies of their building permits, or at least spreadsheet.
Okay, thank you.
That's really our main discovery process for property changes that are occurring out there. The other discovery process is physical reappraisal, and we estimate we'll get to around 1,300 accounts this year. We're going to be doing the Gold Beach area, so they're closer in. We should be able to do more. We may even do better than 1,300, but you can't say for sure. We're just trying to put...
So how often do you reappraise property?
Well, physical reappraisal.
Right.
That was actually another question that Commissioner Huxley had, Commissioners, or excuse me, Questions 3 and 4.
Oh, okay.
We've been on a physical reappraisal schedule in the last, say, five years of probably, and we're making the cycle in probably a 19-year cycle. If we keep our current trained staff, they're both fairly new at this, but they're getting more experience and getting more productive, we think with this year, we'll be working at a level to where we will have that cycle down to a little over 15 years.
So what is the average statewide, their cycle? Just curious.
I don't know that, but what I can tell you is there's quite a few counties in, probably in a very similar cycle to what Curry County is.
Okay.
It used to be that it was a law that required us to reappraise on a six-year cycle.
Yeah.
With the advent of Measures 5 and 50, that went away.
So you just pretty much do the 3% increase on everybody?
Well, the 3% is on the assessed value.
Right, right.
And that's the limited value. We actually reappraise each property in the county every year. It's not necessarily a physical reappraisal. What we do is, is we recalculate all the properties in the county, and we do studies every year to determine what building value should be, and what depreciation schedule should be, and then what land value should be, and we enter all that information into the computer and actually recalculate each property in the county every year, if the property is not undergoing a physical reappraisal.
Okay, so it's pretty much based on comparables in the area, I would think?
It is. It is. Sometimes you can't find good comparables in an area, and you have to go a little wider.
Mm-hmm, okay.
For instance, when we were doing the Upper Windchuck and Upper Chutco Rivers, I mean, you would like to have sales enough from just one of the rivers to do that river, but we combined the two and came up with values.
Okay.
So... May I interrupt you and ask one more question on the property valuation numbers that you're just going through there?
Sure.
Okay, then you have the next one after the physical appraisal, you had recalculation only, no appraisal review, and for, and then there's a subtotal, and then there's a business personal property return. So is it correct to say that, to rounding off, the subtotal of appraisals, whether they were physical or recalculation only, was $19,800, I'm just rounding to the nearest 100?
Yeah, not including, not including the business personal property.
And then not including the thousand for the other, though, that there's approximately...
20,000 taxable accounts in the county?
Twenty, or 20, 21, 21 almost, or 20,800 or so, between 20 and 21,000?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I think we have probably just over 23,000 accounts total, the others being exempt from taxation. And that could either be government land, churches, elks, lodges, hospitals, well, that in this case is government property.
Thank you.
So the next page, Form 5, outlines our tax collection activity. I think probably Lines 11 and 12 might be interesting to you. That's how many second and third trimester notices that we sent out. So what that tells me is of the approximate 21,000 taxable accounts, all but about 3,000 of them, of us pay our property taxes in the first trimester.
It's called the 3% reduction.
Yes, better than you can make in the bank.
That's right.
The next page is really talking about new accounts or consolidations of accounts, or tax district boundary changes. It also has approximately the number of properties that changes hands in the county. It's Line Number 1, or the first, the first number one, number of deeds worked. That's approximately how many properties changed hands last year, 2087. Actually, all of those wouldn't be changing hands. Sometimes people will record a deed to put their property in a trust. Form 7 is where we put down the amounts that are tentatively budgeted for assessment and I had to get something in last week because I, we hadn't had the final conversations with the County Budget Officer, and so that is why I sent you a new form. After final discussions with her and cutting back every place we thought we could cut back, what we've got here is the new Form 7. I think you all have copies of that, right?
Yes.
And that really breaks the cost for assessment taxation into various categories. Assessment Administration, Column A, Invaluation, Column B, are all within the Assessor's Office. And actually, there is a portion that comes out of the Assessor's Office budget that is in Column E, Cartography. We have a contract with the Oregon Department of Revenue to make our map changes for us. And then the rest of that in that cartography is if we get a grant for updating our maps, there's some money in there for that, too. And it's a twice-a-year grant cycle. If we don't get a grant, we don't spend anything. There's, Column C is the amount that's in the BAFTA budget. Column D, Tax Collection and Distribution, that's a portion, well, that's the total of the tax collector's budget plus a portion of the treasurer's budget.
That was B or D?
D.
B.
No, D isn't.
D, okay, yeah.
It's not going to take much to mess me up here, Tom, or Commissioner, but...
Well, no, I was looking, and I just wasn't sure what you...
And then we have cost for data processing, comes down to the totals, goes through other calculations that the Department of Revenue has built into this process. So what we're seeing is a total expenditure level for this CAFSA grant of almost $826,000. So, then what you would expect is, if we're approved for the CAFSA grant, that we would get back approximately 18 cents on the dollar as the CAFSA grant.
Have you ever not been approved?
No.
Is every county approved, pretty much?
Well, yes, as long as they're meeting the minimum requirements for assessment and taxation.
Okay.
Every year, we get an award letter where they're actually very concerned about the level of resource that we have that we're expending here in Curry County. There are some program areas that are, that are suffering because of it. I mean, one of those areas... I mean, one of those areas, we were talking about physical reappraisal before, and I'd tell you that we're probably on a little over a fifteen-year cycle. If we had one more appraiser in the office, I think we could get that cycle down to a little over seven years.
With just one more?
With one more appraiser. It would take a couple of years to get there, but, I mean, we don't get trained appraisers applying for jobs here, and so we're generally having to train somebody to do the work.
Are there consultants out there that do appraising that could come in and maybe help get us more up to date?
Very expensive.
I've heard of that back east. I don't know of any place in Oregon that does that.
Okay, just curious.
They'd be working, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
They'd be working privately, because we have a shortage of appraisers, real estate appraisers, in the whole state, I think. I know we do in this corner of Oregon.
Mm-hmm.
The Six County area.
You said down maybe to seven, and that's approx, that's not a firm cycle change? Did you say seven?
Little over seven years, yeah.
Now, they would have to be, this is a question, that person would have to be certified or approved or whatever?
A registered appraiser.
In Oregon?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Have, has, has it ever come to actually going out to see if there were any or not seriously at this point or to date? To seriously look at outside appraisers, as Commissioner Boyce just...
Yeah, you, I mean, like, have a crew come in and catch it all up at once?
Or an individual under contract or something like that, yeah? Or in a regular...
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's, uh, uh, tonight, past several years, the Budget Committee hasn't looked like they wanted to expend more money for this.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
But it'd be interesting to know the cost-to-benefit ratio there, just to have one employee accelerating that, and what it could mean for the total taxes assessed and being able to collect there would be presumably...
Well, I don't have, I did bring in Commissioner Huxley may remember that I brought to the Budget Committee last year some pictures of some types of property that were being built without building permits.
Yes.
And like I said, the physical reappraisal is our other method of discovery of what's taking place out there. There's a lot of property, a lot of changes on property that are occurring without building permits, and some of it doesn't require building permits. I mean, if a person paves their driveway, it adds value to their property, it is taxable, but it doesn't require a building permit. Or building a small shed, or, you know, simple decks don't require building permits. But we have other things occurring out there where people are converting garages into living areas, or attached porches into living areas, or even building whole houses without building permits. And what we've found in the last three years is, excuse me, not the last three years, but over the last five years, that we've been tracking the value just on those unpermitted accounts, and it's increased the overall assessed value of the county about a half a percent for that sample of properties that we looked at. If we were to extrapolate that out over the county, then we could expect probably an overall value increase of a little over three percent.
So, question, by adding another employee, most of the other taxing districts are the ones that benefit?
That's correct.
Not just the county? The county gets, what, five percent or something?
Six and a half percent.
Okay, some small amount. So what would be the possibility of having the other taxing districts help pay for that extra assessor to come in, because they're the ones that are going to benefit?
They're not exactly lining up to do that.
Well, gosh.
But it hasn't been presented, I'm assuming, in, you know, with the economics that we're talking about here either.
Because that could mean...
I have not presented it to them. I know that Commissioner Brown had some discussions, and she never reported back to me that that went anywhere.
That's just...
There is, there is a measure before the legislature that would ask taxing districts to contribute two percent of what they collect towards the cost of assessment and taxation, not really as offset to what we're doing, but to make an enhancement enough to where we could get on a more reasonable reappraisal cycle. So what does three percent mean in Curry County? Well, that would be a three percent assessed value increase, which would translate into about a three percent overall increase in the tax collected, which means about seven hundred and fifty thousand in Curry County.
But then you take six percent of that from the county and...
The county's share of that would be about fifty thousand, I think.
Mm-hmm.
So it would pay for the other appraiser if you wanted to expend all of the county's share on an appraiser. But, I mean, certainly it's going to beef up the collections for the other districts, which, you know, isn't necessarily a bad thing.
Well, it seems to me that it would be more equitable if the other taxing districts helped pay for this other assessor. That's just my thought.
I agree with you. I, you know, I think it's, it's an awfully big expense for counties to bear, but that's the way that it was set up.
Mm-hmm.
We'll work on them.
What was that?
We'll work on them.
Okay.
Do you know, do you have an update on that bill, by the way? I'm drawing a blank on the number.
Uh... Thanks for asking me, because now you're making me draw a blank on the number. You know, I...
Well, take it back.
Yeah, I just...
I think it was two percent.
I've heard that it's...
No, no, he was, he asked the bill number, though.
Oh, the bill number? Oh.
Yeah, I think it stalled, though.
It's like twenty-three sixty-three or something like that. I spelled twenty-three sixty-three. So then, once we get past Form Seven, Form Eight...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I had one other question on Form Seven, and only because it was a, it was a large difference, and I was curious why, on the changes from the original form to the revised one yesterday, on the data processing, A and T data processing, it went from about seventy thousand down to twenty thousand. That was the biggest single contributor of the change. What was that? Why would that have been so different?
Well, I just plugged in a number there that was based on previous year's numbers.
You mean the seventy-two or...
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this may go up, and you don't know until it's all said and done.
Well, you know, one thing that we're not necessarily getting from our contract with IT service provider is actual costs to the individual counties. So what we see is an estimate in our budgets.
Do you expand on, is there something that, that we can work with Lane County to, or you are working with them already?
Well, no, no, I'm talking about our contract with Coos-Curry Electric for IT services.
Oh, 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 okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Lane County, I did call her and asked her for an estimate for the county, so...
Okay.
So I've got that information.
Okay, thank you. County Council?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I'm involved in some of that GIS contract administration stuff, and so on your Form One, the very first form, it had current approved FTE this year for cartographers and GIS specialists of point five, and then A and T data processing staff, point six, and those were proposed to be removed at a minus one point one. So what I'm wondering, as someone who's administering the GIS contract, is did we in the past have revenues to do GIS-related functions from a CAFSA grant, and this year we're proposing to take, take out those out of CAFSA grant, because we're not having the staffing, we're contracting it out?
Well, actually, I've got the expenses in the CAFSA grant. And so for GIS, for instance, we're estimating that to be around twenty thousand dollars.
That's what I see on Form Seven in the A and T data processing.
And so, you know, by the time they get done with this over at fiscal services, I would expect that they, you know, as far as revenues go, would split out, you know, the eighteen percent of the twenty thousand as a revenue for GIS. I'm not sure how you're budgeting that, so...
I'm not sure either. We're going to present it and see what happens.
Okay.
I spoke to, coincidentally, to the accountant this morning on another subject that went right back to the GIS CAFSA grant amount.
Okay. And she's new to this process as well? So, yeah, I mean, I suspect she'll probably be spending some more time with me to decide what process she wants to deal with.
A significant amount, even estimated, for this coming budget year, per my discussion with her this morning, and a significant carry forward from prior years also, which sort of surprised me.
Okay, I wasn't in on that conversation, so I'm a little bit confused about what you're saying there.
You know, as I say, it was just coincidental that the same thing, a whole nother topic we were discussing, but that CAFSA, GIS CAFSA came up in that discussion.
Yeah, at the time I met with her, I had a copy of what we had done so far, so she has a copy of it.
And we weren't even talking about that subject, so...
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Did you have any other questions on Form Seven?
Nope.
Okay, so Form Eight, the next page, is what I'm hoping that the board will approve the chair to sign off on today. That's really just the approval. Form Nine, that you also got a copy of and that we made a change to, because it's got a number written in there in that last paragraph, the number written into the last paragraph should be the same as the bottom line on Form Seven, so just almost eight hundred and twenty-six thousand. This has me down as the contact person for the grant application. I'm the one that puts it together. And then the last two pages, or the next two pages, I guess, are racial and ethnic impact statements. Julie fills those out, and the last page is an organizational chart for assessment
Mr. Chair, I'm going to approve your voice.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner, County Council?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm looking at the, we had the change in, I'm looking at this form here with the handwritten, where we changed the number to eight twenty-nine or so, or eight, sorry, eight twenty-five nine.
Eight twenty-six.
Eight twenty-six. And then I'm looking at Form Eight, which is also, talks about it being a resolution. They're almost, they're almost the same, and in Form Eight, the copy I have still has the old number. If you look at the upper left-hand side of it, the third paragraph, it still has the nine oh seven two ninety-eight number.
We can fix that and get it back to you.
That's, yeah, because I think these are both essentially...
They're intended to be the same number.
Good. And so I just wanted to make the board cognizant of that. And then on this resolution, what it does say, this is not an appropriation, but it says the board agrees to appropriate the full amount as the budget, and if we don't, they'll withhold. So it doesn't require us to do it, it just says we're agreeing to do it, but if we, in the budget process, don't do this full appropriation of this amount, they will withhold the CAFSA grant. And then we have, and the odd part is, under this law, we have to apply by May first before we do our budget, so it's a little, it's kind of putting us in this position.
Thank you, I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, we have to make the application, just to get our foot in the door to participate. If changes are made to the budget, this is the way that it works. There could either be consequences or maybe some reductions we might be able to get away with.
We are able to...
Of course, we would lose a commensurate amount. If there's any increases, and I hate to tell you this part, they won't increase your amount if there's an increase, but...
Did you, thank you, thank you.
Start the motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
May I have one other question first?
Certainly.
What was the other page that you mentioned? You picked up the nine, showed up in a different page?
Oh, Mr. Chair, it's just on Form Eight. On Form Eight, it's called the Grant Application Resolution, which is really the same as the one that has the handwritten.
Oh, it's typed in, okay, I was looking.
It is typed in, yep, and so...
I can take that back as soon as we're done here and get that corrected and have it back to your office, probably within half an hour, if that's acceptable.
Sure, so if we were going to make that resolution, we'd just ask for that change to be appropriated.
Subject to that. So, Commissioner Boyce?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the CAFSA grant application, subject to the two figures there on Form Eight, the total being eight hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? I'll just make one comment, very appreciated on the comments from the assessor this morning. I hope it was educational for me, I hope it was for everyone in the room.
I appreciate the good questions.
I think it was very, very helpful.
Happy to, I came prepared, though, to go through the salary report, summary of assessments and levies. This is fun reading, I know you'll enjoy it, so...
Well, thank you.
So come and see me for a copy, it's just almost all numbers.
Love it.
Okay, so that said, call for the question.
As long as they're blue and not red.
Call for the question.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we can add another employee soon, Mr. Assessor, thank you.
Well, or two. There'd be some better dealing with. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, that concludes the discussion on Agenda Item Nine. Agenda Item Ten, there was no new business. Agenda Item Eleven, no new business, old business. Agenda Item Twelve, no presentations to the board. Agenda Item Thirteen, Commissioner Updates, Liaison Department Activity Reports. Commissioner Boyce, do you have anything there?
I do, Mr. Chair. Last time I had that opportunity, it took about twenty minutes. I don't think I need that much time to tape, but the first thing I would say is, having three meetings this week, I think is good for the process, and, you know, we did that in forty-five minutes, and it was very educational, and I appreciate that you mentioned that and kind of led in that aspect. So I'm going to start off with Tenny County College, Wasco County, Friday and Saturday. I have some handouts for you. I'd like to be available for any questions you might have, if you'd pass those down. You know, my biggest, my biggest issue as Commissioner is public safety and law enforcement, and so this county college session was on specifically that. I'll just abbreviate here, but we started off with the Office of the Sheriff. The sheriff is the only elected law enforcement individual in the, in all the national law enforcement from the county, citywide, all the way up to the state, and so the sheriff from Hutter County very eloquently highlighted that, and a lot of the information the commissioners knew, a lot of it they didn't know, but there is a tremendous amount of responsibility on the sheriff with the varying aspects that they have to deal with on a, on a daily basis. And being elected by the people, he's responsible, or she is responsible to be accountable to the people, and so it's just very enlightening. Like I say, I can answer questions on that if you like. Another thing we meant, that we reviewed, was Circuit Court. We had a judge there from, actually, the President of the Oregon Circuit Court Judges Association. She was very informative, very helpful to follow that process. It all comes back to public safety and what our responsibilities are as public officials. So it was just... public safety and what our responsibilities are as public officials. So it was just a very informative time. Somewhat related, of course, what the district attorneys go through in their offices at the county level. And we toured another jail. There's, it's called the North County, Norcore Jail, and it actually is administered and used by four different counties in the Wasco, Sherman County area, and in north central Oregon. And that was very interesting. I've had two jail tours in the last two weeks.
Hmm.
Yeah.
So did their food look better than our food?
Look over your shoulder. And then the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council, I'm the Commissioner liaison on that. And I'm just getting more and more of an interest, and I see how much I have to learn. And the effort that the state's putting into that is, I think, is very beneficial. And I'm gonna be able to offer that to our Lip Sync meeting tomorrow. And, you know, the acronym there is Lip Sync, and somebody mentioned that it's kind of like singing, if you're in synchronization, you know, synchronized there. It's, it's, it's a really good acronym for what it represents and how important it is to have law enforcement coordinated in every possible way. Then, of course, Community Corrections, the Juvenile Department, they are very familiar with, with our people here, and juvenile, and our Sheriff's Department, and our District Attorney. And, you know, they all get very high marks. So that was, that was something I could kind of puff my chest out a little bit, and, of course, greatly appreciated. And so I handed you out information on that. One of the things, too, is I talked, I was in the Valley all day yesterday, and I got to talk with, at least twenty minutes with individually each of the three Jackson County Commissioners, two of them I knew fairly well, and met Bob Strasser, who is a retired law enforcement executive in Southern Cal. And, as I said, I've not met him before, but I talked to him for about a half hour, and just absolutely great opportunity there. He's very committed to some of the same things that we are, what I'm focused on with law enforcement. And I joked with the three Commissioners over there, Commissioners Dyer, of course, Colleen Roberts, and Bob Strasser, and said, you know, there's a movement going out that Curry County, Josephine County might be your stepchildren someday. And so I got a good laugh on that. And they're very well managed in Jackson County. In fact, they just got their jail back to, they were able to get an additional sixty-five beds online. So they were, they were glad for that. I have a meeting with Danny Jordan, County Administrator, within a couple of weeks. Been at Josephine County. I met with Commissioner DeYoung. And I want to read you something. People ask me what keeps me awake at night, and I see the acceleration of the whole, this won't take very long, by the way, but the whole marijuana issue, the confusion that people have between medical and recreational. And this is something I've never heard of before, but he offered to me that I could read today. And the subtitle is Advisory Question. So this went into the voter's pamphlet for this May. And it's on regulating commercial recreational marijuana production. You know, some of our growers are not tracked. The federal government's concerned about that. It's accelerating so fast, and how it affects our culture, our kids, our education system, the additional pressure, of course, it puts on law enforcement, is really something we need to be aware of. But the question for the voters in Josephine County was this: In your opinion, should Josephine County prohibit the production of commercial recreational marijuana in all rural residential zones? The property values could very well start going down there, because sometimes there's a retired family, or, excuse me, retired couple that is right in the middle of a growing area, and the smell and all that goes with that. So quickly, the summary, Oregon law allows production of recreational marijuana for a profit. Currently, recreational marijuana may be produced for commercial purposes anywhere in the unincorporated areas of Josephine County. The Board of County Commissioners has placed this advisory question onto the ballot in an attempt to determine whether majority of voters want to prohibit the commercial production of recreational marijuana in all rural residential zones. And there's a couple more paragraphs. I can provide you copies of this if you like. But the point is this, when the people voted in Curry County to legalize marijuana, did they realize, from the recreational and the medical aspects, did they realize what the growing parts would be? And again, the additional responsibility for us as public officials and where that's going. So I'm just trying to be as informed on this as I can. And I just thought this was a great approach to, they're gonna get a consensus back from the voters on this. So maybe I'll be able to report to you, hopefully, on that later on. I also met with Wally Hicks, who I worked with a little bit at the, when I was Legislative Assistant at 2011 Session. He is the legal counsel for Josephine County. When he worked in Salem, he was the state rep for Joe County in 2010 through 2014. He's a Iraq War veteran, just a fascinating guy. Anyway, he's a good resource for us. And then one of the other Commissioners there that I'm getting to know through ALC, and yes, Josephine County has some very similar issues to what we are dealing with here. I also met with former County Administrator Julie Smeltzer. There are so many grant-writing opportunities for the county there, and she's basically offered to volunteer her time. She misses Curry County a lot, and she would like to help if we have some specific areas for her to work on. And this is the Community Corrections Granite. I'm sure that Captain Espinoza and Sheriff Ward are familiar with this, but I'm beginning to get a little bit of insight. And there's just some great opportunities there that primarily comes from the state. We just need the people within the board, if that could ever be authorized, subject to a proposal that I can give you at some point through grant writers, hopefully, and would seek your approval there. The Resource Advisory Committee from the Forest Service, I spent a little time on that Monday morning. And Curry County had some great projects. There isn't enough money to go around, of course, for all of them, but I hope they'll give you a report on that later. I think the total was four hundred thousand for Curry County. I might be wrong on that. But the Forest Service was very well represented, and the board that they have through this advisory committee, really some good people, and very well represented from the timber interests all the way to the environmental representatives. So, like I say, I'd like to give you a report on that later on. I met with the Roadmaster and the Day Wireless people. We have a, you're probably aware of this, if you're not, I wasn't before ten days ago, but our communications towers are aging, and we have some, some potential difficulties there down the road that we're also gonna need to seek funding for. And there's also some good funding opportunities there through the grant system, but it, they're not gonna fall down in the next couple of years, but we, we need to start planning now. And I'm gonna give you a report on that as well. The Two Day Wireless Representatives, very knowledgeable, very informative. And one of them lives here in Curry County, and is a very good resource. Mentioned that my number one priority is, is law enforcement, public safety. And I would have to verify where this information originated from, but I suspect it was the governor's office. But basically, they're letting the, the rural counties especially know that if there's money available, and we try and balance the budget through cuts in the Sheriff's Office, and worst-case scenario, that the Commissioners actually could be liable. So I'm just gonna encourage our board to really be on our toes with that and be aware of that. When, for example, the road funds are available, and not targeted, but through law available, I just want to encourage us to really be well-informed on that. And, you know, two years ago, with, we wouldn't be having this discussion with, because Coos County wasn't at the level it is now. Josephine County had some difficulties, but not at the, not at the rising level that we're seeing. And Del Norte County, and I know I'm repeating, but it is, it's, again, what keeps me up at night as a public official, what my responsibilities are. And I'm not trying to say the sky is falling, but we see right before our eyes, you know, people all over this county, in the rural areas in particular, that can't even afford really good quality door locks. So that's why I think, over time, my goal is to have all the law enforcement agencies in this county consolidated. And I want to be able to brag and hopefully lead in the vision that we can tell everybody in the Western United States that we have the best law enforcement on the Oregon coast. And I think that's a very doable, and I think it's a very wise approach. And that's gonna be my focus. And yes, after we, we voted last meeting to not cut the Sheriff's Office by another four hundred thousand, I've had numerous people say, thank God. So I feel like we really made a good decision there, and I appreciate that we, that we were able to do that. Mr. Chair, the only other thing I have is just our websites, where we are on that, if anybody, for example, the fair wanted to be on our, our site, and I think there's a little slowdown period, or maybe we've overcome that. Do you know anything? Or does anybody?
When you say slowdown, are you talking network issues?
Just that it's not updated often enough, and it's not easy to, to contribute other parts to that. For example, yes, the fair.
On the existing site.
Yes.
Which is where we are. Well, I know there's still major network issues.
Okay.
The, and it has to do with the, the switches that were ordered.
Oh, yeah.
Some time ago, but the mega bits, not bytes, bit rate in that failure was reduced from a gigabyte to a hundred megabytes in those routers, which is a ninety percent reduction. That still exists. The audio/video, Brant Media cannot run streaming video and will not be able to run streaming video until those new pieces of hardware are configured. They're in the process of being configured by outside vendor. And as of two days ago, when I emailed, corresponded back and forth with Coos-Curry Electric IT, they expect the first or second week in May that the reconfigured switches will come back. These are, when I say switches, these are two forty-eight port switches and a twenty-four port. So this is not just a couple of little toggle this, toggle that. They'll come back, and then they'll work with law enforcement as far as when to coordinate a shut, time to shut down to where they can physically do that. Then it will be back up, or should be back up, to a hundred percent from ten percent. So, and they're also, Brant Media's having major issues trying to upload through the network system to even get these video on demands on. It's taking them three, four, or five or more attempts off hours, off hours being, you know, early in the morning, AM, one AM, two AM, three AM. So that's, that's the status. Again, approximately two to three weeks, those switches should be, the new switches should be installed, and speeds back up to normal. But it's gonna be still two to three weeks.
Great.
Based on the initial schedule.
Okay. Oh, I'm also, one more thing real quick. I'm also researching, just with the assessor's office, Sheriff's Office, on the percentage of our budget. I thought I knew this at one point in time, but it goes to law enforcement, particularly the Sheriff's Office, of course, and all the various aspects of those responsibilities. But I did hear a stat not too long ago, in Marion County, seventy-three percent goes to, of the entire general fund goes to the Sheriff's Office. And so I just wonder where we, where we stand on that, and it'd be helpful to know that. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
Monday, I attended the South Coast Business Employment Corporation meeting up in Coos Bay. They're moving along. They have three main purposes, to take care of senior services, including meals on wheels and home care. And they service both Coos and Curry County, which is interesting. They also do transportation, like dial-a-ride. They have bus routes in Curry County. I asked them if they extended those down into, excuse me, they've got them in Coos County. I asked them if they extended those down to Curry County, and they said, no, but we coordinate the times. So. And also, they are involved in helping with workforce development, those who are unemployed getting training and that sort of thing. And I know that that takes place in Curry County, because I had a friend that worked for them at one time. Also, I'm thinking about a manager again, and I'm thinking possibly an interim manager to get things ready for a permanent manager, possibly a year or two. And the reason I'm thinking that is because we need to get our ducks all in a row, for instance, getting the policies updated, et cetera, so that when the new manager comes in, everything's ready to go. So, just my thoughts. Did I do well? Less than two minutes, good.
You did very well.
I'd warn you, but next time probably be longer, for me.
I just have. I believe, and I spoke with County Council yesterday on the subject of pursuing the manager, be it interim or other, and he was going to attempt to get the, that topic back on the agenda for the next general meeting.
Right, and, you know, an interim is not what I've been focused on. I've just been focused on the creation of a position and the job description, the code for that. So whether you all want to do an interim will be something different. But, you know, the, if the board adopts or gives direction on the position, it would all be subject to appropriation and budgeting and those kind of things. So they, I think it's appropriate to consider the position at this time while you're budgeting for the next fiscal year. But I, you know, as far as getting something in place right away, that's another matter. So. But yeah, I'll be trying to get that on for the next agenda at the deadline for the agendas today.
And specifically, what would that be on the agenda?
Beg your pardon?
What specifically would it be? I mean, job description, where we at on that? I'm not sure.
Thanks, and I'll, I'll talk about it more. But essentially, we've had a work session on County Administrator. We've had a presentation on the County Administrator position and ordinance. There was direction to revise the job description to make it more in line with the ordinance. That's been done. We'll bring it back. But I think it would come under, I'd have to say, old business. And then we would seek board direction on, you know, whether to move forward with it. And I don't think we can adopt an ordinance creating the position right now because it isn't funded. I think everything would be hinged on whether it's allocated in the budget process and those kind of things. So I think, I think it would just be direction to have it ready for adoption if it's budgeted. Would, and so I think it would just be bring us back something when, when we get to that point at the change of the fiscal, I think, Mr. Commissioner. That, I don't know how it would work any other way right now. So I think it would just be kind of a preliminary indication, similar sort of to the budget messages and things like that. You didn't really make any decisions in those budget messages. You just gave direction. All the real decisions come later. But I, I think the question is whether it's something the board wants to keep moving forward with. And then that would help, I think, inform all the discussions on the budget process and those kind of things.
I have one quick question. Would you need a separate ordinance if you were to get an interim versus a permanent manager?
I don't believe you need a separate. I, I don't believe you need a separate ordinance to do an interim manager, no.
They would be pretty similar.
I think you would want a job description, though, and...
And that would be very similar to the, the regular manager, I would suspect.
Yep, so that's, that's what, just so you knew what the duties were and what the authorities were. The idea behind the ordinance is to really establish the authorities. It's, it's possible that you could adopt the ordinance and have the position on the books but unfilled, so that the, the powers and duties have been transferred to a position yet to be filled. And then once that position is filled by a, you know, an appointment action, then, then it would, it would be whole. But the odd part is, if you created a, a position and ordinance delegating functions, and then there was no one to do that, the question is, who does those functions? And that's where you get into this, you know, you get, you get into kind of a pickle. So I think you really want to mind your timing here, and just make sure you have, if you're going to, you know, delegate authority, it should be by ordinance. If you wanted to do a temporary ordinance, delegating the authority to a temporary person, I suppose that's acceptable. But again, what I prefer is if the board is going to delegate any of its broad statutory authorities, that that be done by, by an order or an ordinance. An ordinance is more permanent, order would be for a temporary. So I think what, you know, what you're talking about with now the, a possible interim while you're seeking a permanent, that, there would probably be some order establishing that when you went into, you know, the procurement for that individual as well. So I think you're talking about now two different actions. The one action, just considering the county manager position, I think, really is a longer-term look, and it's similar to a budget, it's, it's, it would be that. And then if you wanted to do an interim in the meantime, I think you would borrow heavily from the concepts presented in, in the county administrator and adopt those in some kind of an order for an interim.
Mr. Chair, could I say one more thing? Let me just tell you my thinking on an interim. As a school board member, our school district was in upheaval. And we ended up getting an interim, and his job was to come in and get things organized and set up for the new superintendent of schools. And when the new superintendent of schools was hired, it was so much easier for him to come into the position, because things had been set up for him. And I, I think we would be, have a much better chance of the manager being a happier person and so forth if things were set up for him in advance. For instance, policies being set up and updated and, and so forth. And that would be the, one of the interim's jobs to do, is getting those policies in, in place for the permanent manager.
And I understand that's your experience on, in the school board. My experience is usually when a, when a new county administrator is, is brought in, they want to, and they're charged with, under the ordinances, of reviewing and updating all the policies anyway, so I, and, and kind of... It, it's, it's two sides of the same coin, I think. But, you know, what I've seen is that, you know, these county administrators, these chief executive or administrative officers, you know, they take great ownership in the policies and procedures, and I think they like to take a hand in creating them. So it just depends on what kind of individual you hire, whether they're gonna, whether they're going to, you know, go with whatever policies an interim person has created, or want to make their own mark. So it, I, I, I wouldn't say it would exactly play out the way you said. That's one way it could happen, but it, it might happen a different way as well, depending on, on who you hire and things. Because I think most of them feel like it's their job to review the policies, and I think that's what it says in these.
Well, I just, I just know on the school board, they were like 500 policies behind, and it was just huge task to undertake. And ultimately, it's the board's job to, to approve those policies, so.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Boyce?
Mr. Gold, best-case scenario, if we were able to budget an interim that transcended into a permanent position, would we be looking at maybe late August, September, or something like that?
Oh, I'm hoping sooner.
Okay. We won't be done with budget until, yeah, early summer, so, so I wonder how, how we'd make that work.
Oh, it will work.
No, I, I don't, I mean, how we, just the sequence that we'd be responsible to do.
Hey, yeah, order, order.
All right. Hit the mouse pad.
Sure.
It's okay, my head's still okay.
Blow a speaker.
I have just one comment. During the management meeting yesterday, the accountant gave out a schedule, and it shows, because of a move of the original budget meeting schedule from one week to the next, this is now scheduled to begin May 15th through May 19th. That's the, the week for the budget meetings. Okay. And it has right there in the middle of it, on Wednesday, 5/17, now, because of the move, is a normally scheduled Board of Commissioner meeting. My comment yesterday at that meeting was, we should move, the last thing we need to do, in my opinion, and I'm asking for consensus of the board here, the last thing we need in the, right in the middle of all these budget meetings is to have a Board of Commissioner meeting at 10:00 AM, Wednesday morning, the 17th. So I'm requesting that we defer, delay, move that general meeting from the 17th to the next Wednesday, which would normally be a scheduled workshop, but to get, not have such a major distraction in the middle of the budget meetings. So I'm asking for consensus to do that here.
I would certainly feel good about that one.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just a quick question. That meeting wouldn't contribute to the, the budget process? I mean, you're the experienced one here, and you're, you're basically saying...
All the other topics, I think that would get us so distracted on other things and pull resources from other departments that might make, want to get items on that particular meeting. I think we just need to move it, and we're focused on budget.
Can we counter that now, so I know it was maybe before and after that 17th, I think you said?
Well, the next, the next, the next Wednesday would be normally a workshop.
Okay, so...
To make that the, the, the Board of Commissioner meeting instead. Not have a workshop or a Board of Commissioner meeting the week of May 15th or 17th. That entire week is dedicated to the budget meetings, the budget sessions.
And that's the Budget Committee meeting?
That's the Budget Committee meeting, correct.
Right.
So that would be the 24th we're talking about here?
Correct.
Okay, that's fine with me.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, so...
Staff will operate on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's my only comment. At this point, we will now move into Agenda Item 14, which is an executive session. There are two items on that with the addition this morning. The first one was per Oregon Revise Statute 192-660, subsection 2, subsection F, to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, and subsection H, to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public with regards to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The addition was this morning, subsection D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations for county council huddle to discuss service employee international union negotiations. And what I also had asked for the future, just to, to give a little bit more, as this did right here. It's an executive session, but to give both the public and the commissioners an idea of what the subject is going to be discussed. It's going to be a discussed in executive session, but I think it's, it's prudent to, to let, again, the public and the commissioners know what the general topics of, of the subjects are going to be. So with that said, we will have to ask certainly all, I don't see any press that's here, but to everyone else, and I see some law enforcement, if that may have to do with the union negotiations, then certainly, you know, they're, will, will stay. I'm not sure that that's the case. So, Dave, and we'll ask... If you could please, thank you for coming. Nancy, Rose, Trish? Yeah, you gotta put a new one in? So, so we're gonna, yeah, you, okay.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and the way again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a, a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community, with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But while cautiously, these organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf, but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or, or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines Magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field, with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime. For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yahats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yahats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the Sea Lion Caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the road sides. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes. But you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain. You can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
If yours is the next big idea and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it? If you're only your best when you can play more than you work? If inspiration comes from the outside? You belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch or a rock or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new-designed rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we are actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walk safe? Wait for the signal, take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop and make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
A sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first pass at this park at speed limit of...
Five weeks in Harleyville, we're seeing more than their share of curtin roads these days. Their job is to drive every strip of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style. And so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, it's, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, healthcare, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair? Or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars... Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching seven hundred million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact sixty-nine percent of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain forty-five percent of the nation's roads and four out of ten bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than three-and-a-half million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile.
Smile?
Uh-huh.
This is so easy.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are three thousand and sixty-nine counties across the country, with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in twenty minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers turning the sand? How about sandcastles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and the way again, to coastal towns big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, three hundred sixty-three miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only thirty-one roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is, and what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the nineteen seventies. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official State Maritime Museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing six hundred feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach, or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? Ten miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon, you're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the nineteen thirties by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleets sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns, and as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays, and don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters. They were found out in the wild.
For the next fifty miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The forty-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see seventy miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hacita Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic Old Town Commercial District along the Sayuslaw River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayuslaw River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Banden tour route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There's little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria, ride a horse along the waves near Florence, pet a baby tiger near Bandon, hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people, but you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it? If you're only your best when you can play more than you work? If inspiration comes from the outside? You belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love, and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry, and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagine. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch, or a rock, or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe-meeting type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before and after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new design rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error, and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't remember your training, always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop, and make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first passenger to the posted seat.
Valley Beach and Harley Bill's are seeing more than their share of curtin roads these days. Their job is to drive every section of highway in Region 1 several times.
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style, and so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car, and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration, but with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Now we're going to the WU-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government, and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation, because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work.
Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile.
Smile?
Uh-huh.
This is so easy.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So, do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways: keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah, I know.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an All-American Road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past, and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds and offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kewanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The Central Coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your All-American Road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Fowlweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition burned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away, or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway. The historic bayfront on the north side of Yaquena Bay hosts one of Oregon's largest commercial fishing fleets. It has a busy, genuine working waterfront field with fish plants and boats coming and going from as far away as Alaska. On the south side of the bay is the Oregon Coast Aquarium. Share waters beneath the ocean with sharks and rays. And don't miss the sea otters at mealtime.
Now, all four of our otters were rescued otters? They were found out in the wild?
For the next 50 miles, your trip along Highway 101 hugs the coast. Many more state parks offer opportunities to stop and take in outstanding vistas, crashing waves, and offshore rock formations. Two small towns of note are Waldport and Yawhats. Waldport sits on Alsea Bay, where fishing, clamming, and crabbing are popular. The 40-mile stretch south of Waldport marks steep headlands, jagged volcanic outcrops, and jaw-dropping scenery, the rugged edge of the Oregon coast. Yawhats is a quiet, unhurried artist town just a couple of miles north of Cape Perpetua. Drive to the top of this bluff, and you'll be 800 feet above the water. On a clear day, you can see 70 miles of Oregon coastline. Drive past Hasida Head Lighthouse to the sea lion caves. A quick elevator ride 200 feet down puts you in America's largest sea cave, the year-round home of wild stellar sea lions. Rugged cliffs give way to graceful beaches as you approach Florence. In the spring, be on the lookout for wild rododendrons along the roadside. Similar to Newport, you'll find an historic old-town commercial district along the Sayusla River. Florence is the gateway to the Oregon Dunes National Recreation Area, a 47-mile sandbox of windsculpted sand dunes towering 500 feet above sea level. These are the largest expanse of coastal sand dunes in North America. Reed's Port is at the center of the Oregon Dunes, but you can do more than ride a dune buggy or motorcycle. A short three miles east of town on Highway 38, more than 100 Roosevelt elk reside at the Dean Creek Elk Viewing Area. Early mornings or just before dusk are the best times to photograph the herd. Paying homage to Oregon's timber heritage, Reed's Port hosts an annual chainsaw sculpting championship, a time to watch three-dimensional artwork come to life right before your eyes. Mountains of sand continue at Winchester Bay. You'll also find an active marina here. It's a great place to try your hand at crabbing or take a charter for salmon or bottom fishing. The dunes end and you enter the coast's largest urban area, at Coos Bay. It has the deepest natural harbor between Seattle and San Francisco. Foreign vessels sail under the massive McCullough Bridge. You may have noticed dotted along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are many beautiful and iconic bridges. The Megler Bridge in Astoria, Yaquena Bay Bridge in Newport, Alsea Bay Bridge in Waldport, Sayusla River Bridge in Florence, and the magnificent McCullough Bridge in Coos Bay are works of art in their own right. Charleston is slightly off the byway at the mouth of the bay. It was once an old waterfront fishing village and has become a commercial and sport fishing center. From here, the Charleston to Bandon Tour Route offers another side trip off the byway. It's a wonderful way to explore a variety of natural Pacific Coast beauty in a number of settings: beaches, vistas, gardens, and more. Giant sea stacks, a tiny lighthouse, and an old town await you in Bandon. Do you like to golf? This remote area on the Oregon coast has not one but three of the most stunning and challenging golf courses in the world. As you drive south of town, look for brilliant red bogs in the fall. You're passing through the cranberry capital of Oregon. After a trek through forests and farmlands, you'll reach Port Orford. The Wild Coast has begun. You're in the most westerly city in the continental United States, and you've reached some of the most awesome scenery on the byway. Here, you can watch a fishing fleet launched by Crane in one of only six dolly ports in the world. Port Orford covers less than two square miles. It's similar to many communities that call this All-American Road home. Small in size, still with a lot to offer. Like Manzanita, with a vibrant business district and beautiful setting at the base of Nea County Mountain, you can board a fishing charter out of Garibaldi, swim in freshwater lakes near Dune City, catch world-class windsurfing at Pistol River. There is little development from Port Orford to Gold Beach, outlet for the renowned Rogue River. Feel like going for a ride? Jet boat excursions run from May into October up this wild and scenic river. Or maybe a midday walk on an uncrowded beach is more your speed. The last dozen miles of the Pacific Coast Byway leading into Brookings save some of the best for last. Treat yourself to frequent stops along the Samuel H. Boardman Scenic Corridor. Short hikes reward you with the best views in this shining stretch of coastline. Walk, relax, and be amazed along the coves and the crashing surf. The world's northernmost redwood grove is eight miles from the mouth of the Chetco River in Brookings. So, you've toured nature's finest art museum. You've dined elegantly, hung out with sea lions, unwound like you wish you could every day. What else is there to do? What else is there to do? Step back in history near Astoria. Ride a horse along the waves near Florence. Pet a baby tiger near Bandon. Hike a trail, sample gourmet cheese, eat fresh-caught crab, watch a sunset.
When you come to the Oregon coast and walk on the beaches or go to the headlands and go to the small coastal towns, you really can commune with nature, and you don't have huge numbers of people. But you're also able to take in one of America's last great unspoiled seascapes.
So what draws you to the Oregon coast? What favorite places lure you back again and again? Each visit is different. The ocean, the sky, the light, and the experience always continue to amaze. Shouldn't you be there?
If yours is the next big idea, and you need the right place to fine-tune it, build it, launch it. If you're only your best when you can play more than you work. If inspiration comes from the outside, you belong in Curry County. The westernmost point of the land you love and the edge between familiar and uncharted. Break the pattern. Be where the airports are as close as the beaches, and industry and recreation never cease to amaze. Dock, dive, and dine in a single day, and never lose your connection. This is the threshold of the West. Live where you can do you and do it well, at the farthest point from ordinary. Curry County, living on the edge.
There's something about having land and sea. Never having to choose between digging in or looking out. Here, you can go where the spirit or the wind moves you. To the tops of the trees, along secluded beaches, or into more wild and scenic rivers than anywhere else in the western United States. We're the closest place to the sunset while still keeping your feet dry and a destination where anyone can begin. We share more than we keep, so you can see more than you imagined. This is a place you have to touch, hold, and feel to believe. The entire shoreline of the West Coast's best coast is open to you, and playgrounds made of forests are waiting for you. Escape to Curry County, and don't leave anything out.
Roadway departure fatalities are a serious and often preventable problem in the United States. The Federal Highway Administration reports that 54% of all highway fatalities are caused by drivers leaving their lane of travel. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking a proactive approach to reduce this kind of tragedy by implementing a centerline and shoulder rumble strip program.
Rumble strips are one of the most low-cost, cost-effective countermeasures that we can apply across the system.
Rumble strips are grooved patterns on the roadway that make a rumbling sound and a physical vibration immediately warning inattentive drivers that they're leaving their driving lane. Rumble strips allow drivers to self-correct and avoid an accident.
About 67% of fatal crashes in Oregon are road departure crashes, which are a vehicle can leave the lane to the right and hit a ditch, or a rock, or a tree, something like that, or cross over the centerline to the left and get in a head-on collision or a sideswipe meeting-type crash.
Over an eight-year period, ODOT engineers studied segments of 16 different highways and concluded that rumble strips are highly effective at reducing lane departures.
We did a before-and-after crash analysis to find that we have reduced head-on fatalities by 40% with the installation of centerline rumble strips.
We've been trying to find a way to deal with a problem that seems to be increasing over the last 10 or 15 years with our drivers, and that's distracted driving. And there's a lot of things that cause distracted driving. All these distractions are things that make people take their attention away from where it should be.
Comparisons between other available safety features like guardrail and concrete barriers show that shoulder and centerline rumble strips are the most cost-effective safety treatment available.
We're finding that those are very effective in trying to make sure that when you do make that mistake, it's not the last mistake you make. They help bring your attention back to the driving task and bring you back to where you should be, focusing on being in the middle of your lane and being safe.
ODOT makes a conscious effort to use a bike-friendly rumble strip design where possible and installs 12-foot bike gaps every 48 feet of rumble strip. ODOT understands that rumble strips create a noise that can be disruptive for people who live near rural highways, and we're trying to address these concerns with different approaches.
For the noise, we're looking at some new designs. We're hoping that the new-designed rumble strip will be just as effective at saving people from making an error and much quieter, on the order of 10 times as quiet. And we're actually going to be installing our first full set of these style of rumble strips along 205 this summer.
So we recognize that noise is a concern, but one of the things I like to tell people is whenever you hear the sound of a rumble strip, it could be the sound of the life being saved of one of your loved ones.
Rumble strips are proven to save lives. The Oregon Department of Transportation is taking the lead in implementing the Sound of Safety.
I love walking. It's what I do. So who better to share some tips to help keep your walks safe? Wait for the signal. Take in the sights and smells till you get the go-ahead to cross. Use intersections to cross, but when you can't, remember your training. Always look left, right, left. Show you want to cross and wait for all lanes of traffic to stop. And make eye contact so you know the driver sees you. Hi there. Good human. You get a treat when we get home.
Sign that doesn't have a rider on it, so we take our first test at this posted speed limit.
Five weeks in Harleyville, they're seeing more than their share of curvy roads these days. Their job is to drive every stretch of highway in Region 1 several times. All this driving back and forth...
The old limits were set back in the 1930s and 40s, and were changed very little until just recently. So now our limits are taking into account newer vehicles, a little bit more aggressive driving style. And so those limits are going up.
And going up in a big way. This is Eric Leeming, a traffic devices engineer with ODOT. He's driving an ordinary car with some extraordinary tech onboard, a GPS device that records data as he maneuvers every curve in the road. Back at his office, Eric can upload the data recorded in the car and special software determines exactly the right speed for every curve, every time. Most speeds will increase by 5 to 10 miles per hour, but in some special cases, it's much higher.
The state has a deadline of 2019 from the Federal Highway Administration. But with 8,000 miles of roads to investigate and potentially thousands of signs to change, they're not wasting any time. They're getting out there right now.
Then we're going to W-113.
About 800 signs along this section.
That's a lot of signs.
It's a lot of signs. If it's a 35 mile an hour corner, you should be taking it at 35 miles an hour.
America's 3,069 county governments provide fundamental services for building healthy, safe, and vibrant communities. We are an intergovernmental partner, implementing federal and state policies at the local level, often under strict rules and funding constraints. County governments, through the National Association of Counties, engage federal policymakers on a range of issues like transportation, infrastructure, health care, public safety, and public lands management. All of these issues are vital to our nation's quality of life and our long-term prosperity. Decisions made by the White House, Congress, and federal courts have a major cascading impact on our ability to lead our communities and pursue a better future. Let's look at why federal policies matter to county government and why county government matters to America. Counties provide vital services that keep our communities thriving and secure. We own and maintain 45% of roads and four out of 10 bridges. We own more than a third of the airports and hundreds of hospitals and thousands of courthouses, jails, 911 call centers, and libraries. We play a critical role during emergencies like hurricanes, floods, and snowstorms. What if you called 911 and no one answered? What if you couldn't reach your medical facility because roads and bridges were in disrepair or never built? County governments are an indispensable part of the infrastructure and services that keep residents safe and connected. But with very limited revenue options under most state constitutions and laws, counties must make every penny count in order to fulfill federal and state mandates and required responsibilities. Nothing is more basic in our society than essential public facilities like schools, hospitals, airports, jails, bridges, and other infrastructure. Yet proposals have surfaced to eliminate or scale back tax-exempt municipal bonds. For over a century, municipal bonds have been the lifeblood for our nation's public infrastructure, helping finance more than $3.7 trillion in essential projects. If tax-exempt municipal bonds were eliminated or scaled back, county governments and our residents would face billions in new costs when financing vital facilities. Additionally, counties rely on MAP-21 and the Federal Highway Trust Fund to complement local transportation financing resources. With growing demands and mounting costs, we need a reliable federal partner to invest with us in our nation's economic growth and competitiveness. We need a long-term legislative solution with increased funding to ensure continued success in operating our nation's transportation system. Counties face further revenue losses each year because billions of dollars in e-commerce sales tax revenue isn't collected. The Marketplace Fairness Act would enable states and localities to collect existing already owed taxes. It would also level the playing field between many internet retailers who don't collect sales taxes and Main Street businesses that do. County governments provide support services to federal public lands, touching 700 million annual visitors. We lead search and rescue operations, fight fires, protect the public's health, and maintain roads. Federal lands cover nearly one-third of the U.S. and impact 69% of counties. Because federal land is exempt from local property taxes, counties depend on PILT, the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Program, to provide essential services. The Secure Rural Schools Program provides assistance to rural counties and school districts affected by the decline in revenue from timber harvests on federal land. Decisions to cut or delay funding both programs undermine our ability to provide services and maintain public lands. Our intergovernmental partnerships don't end with legislation because counties also implement and comply with federal and state regulations. When considering environmental protections, we know our communities and care deeply about the environment. We need a stronger voice in shaping common sense regulations that protect communities while also promoting economic growth. This is why NACO secured significant improvements to FEMA's flood insurance program and is pushing back on the waters of the U.S.-proposed rule. Our message: Federal policies matter to county government, and county government matters to America. Every level of government must work together to shape policies that improve the quality of life for all Americans. Whether it's building and maintaining infrastructure, providing essential services, or fostering economic growth, counties are on the front line serving their citizens. NACO stands ready to work with the administration and Congress to make our nation's communities healthier, safer, and more vibrant places to live and work. Counties matter. Counties serve nearly every American every day. Urban, suburban, and rural, counties work with states, the federal government, and other public and private partners to keep our communities healthy, vibrant, and safe. Whether you're commuting to work or shipping goods around the globe, counties matter. Counties own and maintain 45% of the nation's roads and four out of 10 bridges. And we're involved in nearly a third of public airports and transit systems. Counties matter when Americans need us the most. Counties matter because we support smart, fair, and effective criminal justice systems. We help fund police and sheriff's departments. We own and operate local jails, 911 call centers, and mental health facilities. Counties create healthy communities. We invest more than $80 billion in hospitals and medical services each year. Counties matter because we invest in the lives of residents of all ages, improving their quality of life where they live and work. Counties are the building blocks of state, regional, and national economies. We support housing, recreation, and economic development.
We support housing, recreation, and economic development. And we do so much more. From issuing birth certificates to administering elections, counties employ more than 3.5 million people. In total, we invest more than half a trillion dollars in our residents and our communities every year. Counties provide essential services we all depend on every day. That's why counties matter.
How many letters?
Five letters.
Just think about what am I doing right now? Smile. Smile? Uh-huh. This is so easy.
Why do counties matter? Simple. Counties provide the services we all depend on. If you're concerned about crime, get a regular flu shot, drive to work, take public transportation, or experience a natural disaster in your community, chances are you benefit from county services. That's why counties matter. With America's system of federalism, counties are a key level of government, serving the people directly. So do you vote? Had a recent hospital stay? Know someone in a nursing home? More reasons why counties matter. There are 3,069 counties across the country with populations big and small. Most of us live and work in one. Even the nation's capital is considered a county. These county governments ensure that the food you eat in restaurants is safe. They care for the mentally ill, run court systems, build local economies, and operate 911 emergency systems. They manage parks and recreation facilities, and the list goes on. Thing is, counties serve the American people in so many ways, keeping our communities healthy, vibrant, safe, and fiscally sound. That's why counties matter.
Yeah, I just picked her up. We should be there in 20 minutes.
Who is it? Oh, it's him. Where is he?
I know. Yeah. I know.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway are as far-reaching as your imagination. This is a spectacular part of Oregon that traces the entire coastline along Highway 101, guiding you to the sea and away again, to coastal towns, big and small, lowland marshes, and breathtaking overlooks. It's a long byway stretching from the mouth of the Columbia River to the California border, 363 miles in all, of some of the most unblemished, awe-inspiring seascapes you'll find anywhere. In addition to its designation as a scenic byway, Highway 101 in Oregon also has been selected as an all-American road. That means when you come here, you will experience one of only 31 roads considered to be the best of the best in America.
You know, when people come to the Oregon coast, they're really astonished how beautiful it is. And what separates it from many of the other places in North America that are coastal is how undeveloped it is. And that's because Oregon had a very far-sided land use program back in the 1970s. We have all these wonderful state parks along the scenic byway that are perfect places to stop and enjoy nature in a relatively unspoiled way.
From the north, you begin in Astoria, the first permanent European settlement in the Pacific Northwest. It's a genuine maritime community with ship traffic from around the world seeking harbor up the Columbia. The official state maritime museum of Oregon sits here on the river. Beautiful Victorian houses dot the hillside. And standing 600 feet above sea level is the 125-foot Astoria Column. It features a hand-painted spiral frieze that would stretch over 500 feet if unwound. Heading south, you'll find the community of Seaside, a popular vacation spot that offers miles of public beaches, an oceanfront promenade, and a downtown core packed with restaurants, shops, and even a beach-type arcade. Cannon Beach is home to one of Oregon's most photographed natural wonders, Haystack Rock. Get your shots from the beach or take a short drive up to Ecola State Park and look down on this 235-foot work of art. The picturesque small town is filled with art galleries, shops, and cafes. Ready for more? 10 miles to the south, this is the view from Cape Falcon. You're 700 feet above the Pacific. Here, the Pacific Coast Byway has been carved out of Nea County Mountain and held in place by stone walls built in the 1930s by craftsmen in the Civilian Conservation Corps. Upon descending the mountain, the highway drifts inward around Tillamook Bay to Tillamook, the unofficial dairy capital of Oregon. The verdant valley of dairy farms in this area produces 25 million gallons of milk annually. Much of that is processed into natural cheddar cheese. And near more than 800 miles of navigable waters, Tillamook is a crossroads for North Coast recreation. From here, you owe it to yourself to veer off Highway 101 to explore the Three Cape Scenic Loop. This drive places you right at the beach, beginning with Cape Mirs, home to the shortest lighthouse in Oregon. Nine lighthouses stand sentinel along Oregon's coastline. They're monuments to our maritime heritage, towering links to the past and as much a part of the rugged Oregon coastal landscape as any offshore monolith. The Cape Mirs Lighthouse was first illuminated in 1890. Oregon's oldest lighthouse is at Cape Blanco, the westernmost point in the state. It was commissioned in 1870 to aid shipping generated by gold mining and the lumber industry. The 93-foot-high Yaquena Head Lighthouse is the tallest in Oregon. Today, its automated light continues to aid navigation at the entrance to Yaquena Bay. Many of the lighthouses are open to the public. Most happen to be excellent places to view nesting seabirds in offshore sea life. Tide pools, those rocky areas between high and low tides, support unique and diverse plants and animals. Vast amounts of colorful, otherworldly creatures wait to be discovered. But walk cautiously. These organisms are tough enough to withstand the pounding surf but are utterly vulnerable to human activity. Wildlife and sea life abound on the coast.
There are six national wildlife refuges along the Oregon coast. The Pacific Coast Scenic Byway bisects these refuges or goes alongside them. It provides you the opportunity to see a wide variety of abundant wildlife, including seabirds, seals and sea lions, deer and elk, and many other wildlife.
Cape Kiwanda lies at the southern end of the Three Cape Scenic Loop, near the town of Pacific City. Here, you'll find a second Haystack Rock on the byway. Hike up the dune to marvel at stunning views of sandstone formations as they turn yellow, gold, or even red in the changing sunlight. If your timing is right, you'll spot one or two of the Dory fleet sprint onto the beach after a day of fishing. How's this for a dinner setting? Restaurants along the Pacific Coast Scenic Byway accommodate just about any taste. Many serve an ocean view with every meal. Up and down the coast, you'll find seafood, of course, but don't limit yourself just because you're by the water. The central coast begins around Lincoln City, which is one of the larger communities on the byway. It has a reputation for being windy and was recognized by Kite Lines magazine as the best place to fly a kite in North America. It was incorporated from several small towns and, as a result, offers a sandy beach that is seven and a half miles long. A number of small state parks lie nestled along the ocean between Lincoln City and Newport. Stop, get out of your car, and take in the commanding views that are there, right next to your all-American road. Depot Bay boasts the world's smallest navigable harbor, six square acres in all. A seawall runs the length of the downtown, so everywhere you go, you're rewarded with a dramatic view of the Pacific. It's considered Oregon's whale-watching capital, with thousands making their way past Oregon each fall and spring. Fishing and whale-watching excursions regularly set sail from this little harbor. Leaving Depot Bay, you'll soon find yourself at Cape Falweather, a basalt outcropping that looms 500 feet above the water. It was here, in 1778, British Captain James Cook first sighted the mainland of North America on the Pacific coast. A fierce storm that almost put an end to his expedition earned this rugged stretch of coastline its name. Coastal weather can change by the hour. You will find a lot of wet days, but rain can become blue sky with white clouds in an afternoon. Mist kissing the headlands burns away. Or storms can last for days. Some people come for those storms. Whether you find sunbursts of happiness or cloud cover like a quilt, there's always a reason to come back. Like Lincoln City, Newport is one of the larger towns on the byway.
Okay, we're back. On line here. We are coming out of executive session. It's 1:22 PM, April 26, 2017. We are going to proceed as discussed and request that county council huddle do so as discussed during executive session. And that would entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, call for that question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That said, then we will adjourn this meeting at 1:23 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thanks, Board.